Good evening. I'm John Wensky, chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee, and welcome to our meeting for Wednesday, June 5th, 2024. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live on Selco's channels 29 and 329, and streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connection. Thank you to Shrewsbury Media Connection and Liz Poprovsky for their assistance with our broadcast. Tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast on SMC's website and their YouTube channel between now and our next scheduled meeting on Wednesday, June 12th. Before we begin our agenda, I'd like to recognize a member of the Shrewsbury Public School Community who sadly passed away on May 28th. Coach Jim Smith served as boys' cross-country coach at Shrewsbury High School for 33 years, as well as an assistant coach for both indoor and outdoor track and field during several of those years. Coach Smith's tenure included numerous Mid-Watch League titles, a third-place finish at the 2012 Massachusetts State Meet, and an individual state cross-country championship in 2010. Coach Smith was beloved by many SHS students, faculty, and staff, and on behalf of the school committee, we send our deepest condolences to his family, his friends, colleagues, and students. I ask that you please join us in a moment of silence in honor of Coach Jim Smith. Thank you. At the start of next week's meeting on Wednesday, June 12th, Coach Smith's family and assistant coaches will be here to make some remarks, and will honor his legacy during next week's meeting. I know tonight we have our athletic director, Jay Costa, with us here tonight. I know you're also planning to be with us next week as well, but I'd like to give you some time if you'd like to say a few words about Coach Smith. The floor is yours.
Well, thank you very much, and appreciate those kind of words before the meeting here. Yeah, it was very sad news to hear that Coach Smith had passed away last Tuesday. A very difficult phone call to receive. I was fortunate enough to be an athlete under Coach Smith over 30 years ago. He decided that in the beginning of my career, when I was a distance runner, that I wasn't a distance runner, and told me to go to the spring coach after probably a couple of practices there. And I was very fortunate enough to work alongside him over the last 26 years. I know he would be deeply honored to be here today, being a part of the faculty -- excuse me -- being a part of the faculty and being honored for his years of service as our coach. Jim was all about the kids. He put a lot of time and effort. You would see Jim out back, what do you call, weed-whacking the course or doing something to mark the areas for the kids. Him and his wife had just done an amazing job, and I know next week we'll be recognizing him, his son, and his wife, and his daughter Emily, who I was fortunate enough to graduate high school with from Shrewsbury High School. But Jim was just an amazing coach, and the environment that he created was just top-notch. He was well-respected within the middle of the Massachusetts League and the state of Massachusetts as far as cross-country coaches. Then we're just saddened by his loss, and I know if he was here today, he would be very proud and probably spend more time talking about his athletes than himself. But the amazing work he did as an educator for many years and as a coach, I really can't say enough to say thank you for giving him the opportunity to be recognized today. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Costa. Dr. Sawyer, any further comments?
Thank you. I know Mr. Costa plans to be here next week. However, as you know, Mr. Costa is a leader among his peers, and he is actually responsible for directing the state baseball championship tournament this year. And depending on rain, he may have to be at Holy Cross next Wednesday. Hopefully, those games will be finished by Tuesday, and you'll be here next Wednesday as well. Thank you for the kind words about Coach Smith. We'll look forward to honoring him next week, and appreciate the school committee's recognition. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you both.
Thank you.
The first item on our agenda is public participation. Tonight, we've not received a request to speak at public participation. Public participation is available to any and all residents that wish to address the committee regarding concerns pertaining to policy, budget, and the performance of the superintendent in the future. If anyone wishes to speak at public participation, they should contact the chairperson in advance of the next scheduled school committee meeting. The next item on our agenda is chairpersons and members' reports. Colleagues, anything to report? Ms. Boucher.
I would just like to thank all the staff, administration at the high school for the wonderful events last week honoring the class of 2024. We wound up having a beautiful night for graduation. The day was kind of off to a shaky start, but it was a beautiful evening commemoration, the faculty-student dinner, all of the different events last week. Just a tremendous amount of work goes into all of that, and I just wanted to acknowledge all of the hard work and dedication that went into pulling all of that off last week. Additionally, I had the opportunity to go to Spring Street School yesterday morning and to be part of the walkthrough of the graduates of the class of 2016 from Spring Street School, went back in their caps and gowns, and saw their elementary teachers, and lots of great energy from the students, cheers and acknowledgement of the graduates, lots of hugs from the students, former teachers. Just a great way to start the day yesterday, so we had a very nice turnout. Almost like half the class participated. So, I just wanted to thank Mr. Maybe at Spring Street and Jenny Goodella for helping facilitate that. And I know the other elementary schools also had similar festivities to honor the class of 24, so I just wanted to acknowledge that as well.
Great. I'd also like to echo Ms. Boucher's sentiments. As you can imagine, as a parent of a graduate, it was a pretty whirlwind of emotions all last week, so I want to thank all of the faculty, staff, and students for just great events last week, including the graduation walks, little colonials, and at Patton School in particular. But just a great week of events, so thank you all, and congratulations to the class of 2024. Ms. Heffernan.
Yeah, in the spirit of wonderful, positive events at Shrewsbury Public Schools, I'll keep this brief. I want to just acknowledge that I attended just about two weeks ago now a fundraising event put on by our PTO at the middle school level. I know some of the middle school folks are in this room tonight that was raucous. It was very hot, but it was a basketball game against the Harlem Wizards, and the Shrewsbury faculty that showed up showed a great sense of humor, lots of pranks and antics, and from, you know, new staff to some staff who are a little farther on in years, all on the court, really just having a wonderful time. The kids absolutely loved it. I forced all of my colleagues to watch a video of it because they couldn't be there because it was so great, and then ended up in a dance party on the floor. So, just a really wonderful vibe and feeling, and middle school's not always the easiest time, but those kids were having an absolute blast, so it was really quite impressive. Big thanks to the PTO, and I'm sure all the -- honestly, I think they fielded -- you would like to have such a big basketball team. I had 40-odd faculty on the team, so it was quite an event. I see our principal here, just really, really well-done. Wonderful night. I'm sure it was a successful fundraiser, but really, the feeling in the room was pretty awesome.
Great. Also, would mention too, a big thank you to Shrewsbury Media Connection for covering many of these events and posting them on YouTube for those of you that could not make it, so. All right. Next item on the agenda is superintendent's report. Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you. Let me add my congratulations to the class of 2024, and thank you to all of the faculty and staff throughout their pre-K through 12 experience who helped prepare them for that, that they could earn their diploma from Shrewsbury High School. Again, there were a wonderful set of events over the course of senior week. I also wanted to announce, let the faculty and staff know recently, that we have come to an agreement for our next Director of Information Technology for the school district. Mr. Brian LaRue, who's been our Director of IT for about the last decade-plus, is going to be stepping into the project manager role at his request. Mr. LaRue's done an outstanding job in the director role. I think we are one of the -- have one of the finest IT programs in terms of infrastructure and devices and service in the Commonwealth, and he has big shoes to fill. He really wanted to move into this project management piece, and so we did a significant search for his successor, and very pleased that Cadian Phillips, who is currently the Director of Information Technology for the Oxford Public Schools, he's been in that role for nine years. He was in the same role in Northbridge for four years prior to that. Earlier in his career, he was an educator, a teacher of physics, Director of Operations, and an Assistant Principal in the New York City Public Schools in the South Bronx. He was educated at Middlebury College, where he received a degree in physics and also received a master's in education with a concentration in physics teaching from Lehman College. He had an excellent semifinalist interview, a very strong site visit when he spent a day in the district visiting, meeting with all sorts of folks from the IT team to different administrators, parents, and ultimately among a very strong field in three very strong finalists, he emerged as the preferred candidate, and very pleased he accepted my offer to start with us on July 1st. So, we look forward to having Mr. Phillips join our leadership team, and know he'll continue that tradition of excellence in our IT department. And that is superintendent's report.
Great. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is a time-scheduled appointment. It's the acceptance of a donation for the Shrewsbury High School weight room and a vote. So, for some background, per school committee policy 911, gifts of $5,000 or more must be formally accepted by the school committee. The Shrewsbury High School Athletic Boosters Association has offered to make a donation of $62,000 to support renovation of the weight room at Shrewsbury High School. Tonight, to present is our Director of Athletics, Mr. Jay Costa, and Shrewsbury High School Athletic Boosters Association President, Mr. Tony Tizano, available to present to us tonight. Do you want some introductions?
Yeah. Thank you very much. I'm very excited to have Mr. Tony Tizano, our president, and Mr. Jim Lemay, our vice president of our Boosters Association. I've been fortunate enough to work with them for many, many years, but in their role as officers in our booster club, I think for over the last 16 years, we've been able to work together and find ways to help fund the program. I don't want to steal Mr. Tizano's thunder hair, because I know he's got a presentation, but we're really excited about the opportunity to enhance our weight room facility, not only for just the athletes of Shrewsbury High School, but for all the students and faculty of Shrewsbury High School. It's been 21 years since it's been kind of upgraded, so we felt it was time to catch up with the times as far as equipment goes and the usage of the facility. So, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Tizano.
So, thank you. As he said, my name is Tony Tizano, President of Shrewsbury High School Boosters Association. The Boosters Program mission statement is, "The Shrewsbury High School Athletic Boosters Association is a charitable nonprofit organization whose purpose is to encourage enthusiastic support and interest in Shrewsbury High and middle school athletics, to award scholarships which contribute to the post-secondary education of graduating seniors, to contribute to the advancement and needs of the athletic program in those schools, and lend support to the Director of Athletics. Shrewsbury Boosters is a club that fundraises for all school sports. All money raised goes directly back to all athletics for the sole purpose of meeting the needs of all sports. The team effort by boosters and the athletes on and off the field shows that no team is greater than the whole, that is, Shrewsbury Athletics. With that statement in mind, the Boosters Board has also been trying to find ways to directly assist in advancing school spirit and the all-sport mission statement. The Boosters Board believes we found a way that will not only help our athletes, but also the entire Shrewsbury High School and middle school community. The Boosters Board and all of our volunteer parent representatives and members respectfully ask the school committee to accept our $62,000 donation to upgrade and transform the Shrewsbury High School weight room and trainers' facility. The Boosters Board believes that this donation will not only benefit all athletes, but it will also benefit all physical education classes, students, coaches, and faculty who will have the access to enjoy the use of the new facility. I would like to publicly thank all the board members, volunteers, athletes, and many sponsors for their commitment in making Boosters a continued success. Without all of you, none of this would be possible. Thank you."
So, I'd like to just take this opportunity to really thank the Boosters Board and for all the work that they do, as you know, the many projects over the past few years. They included the huge renovation of our turf facility and track facility back in 2018. They led the charge with the assessment of our fields and then the contribution to get us over the million-dollar mark in the fundraising. As a collective whole, it's just been an amazing process to watch. I remember 18 years ago when we joined all the many booster clubs into one big booster club. People thought we were kind of crazy in doing that, and everyone had their own specific need. But our booster club, I believe, and we're given a rough number, has probably raised well over $10 million towards our athletic program over the years by supplying uniforms, equipment that we can't fund through the appropriated budget. And, you know, remind our athletes and our coaches how special we are to have a booster club that is as active as they are, to do the things that we have. And to be able to, you know, we always have the motto, "If you look good, you play good." So, you know, our athletes are very fortunate to have that opportunity every few years to get the new uniforms and be proud to wear that uniform. So, I know on behalf of the athletes and the coaches, we'd like to thank the booster club for this donation.
Great. Thank you so much. Colleagues, questions?
I just want to express my generosity or appreciation for your generosity, that is, high school athletics, I think, and middle school athletics, as you know, but this trajectory to the high school is so important. The size of that building, the number of kids that are moving through it, the gym classes, right, not just the kids who are in our athletic programs after school, but it's an incredible building, an incredible space, and I'm sure could use a little facelift after 20 years of work. And so, thank you so very much for all that you do. I see all of your emails. I see you at the events. I was just at the eighth-grade upcoming event for athletics, and there was a table, "Here's the boosters, here's what we're doing," and so trying to get the new parents. So, I just really appreciate it. It's a lot of work, it's a lot of money, and I thank you very much.
Any further comments? Thank you very much, Mr. Tizano, Mr. Lemay, for all the work that you've done in supporting our students. And we talked about this in town meeting, about the critical need for alternative funding, what we can't cover during -- within the appropriated budget, and this really goes a long way, not just for our student athletes, but for all students at the high school. So, thank you so much for the generous donation. Appreciate it. And Dr. Sawyer, any further comments?
I want to certainly express my deep gratitude to the boosters for this extremely generous donation that's going to help us really make that facility, again, a first-class one for our students. I particularly want to thank, you know, all the volunteers involved with boosters, and I know that Mr. Tizano, Mr. Lemay are just two of many, but I think they're two examples of what make this community a very special place. I know, like me, that you're on an athletic background in other communities where you grew up, but came to Shrewsbury and raised your families here, and had your children benefit from our school district and from the athletic program. I know you've contributed a ton to it over many years, and the fact that your children are long graduated and you're still involved doing this work to help other people's kids, maybe some grandkids at some point, I don't know. I know we have some in the system, Mr. Tizano, for sure, but I think the longevity of people continuing to donate their time, their expertise, willing to roll up their sleeves and help raise funds where we need to do that to help make our schools as good as they can be, really is something that makes this a wonderful community. So, thank you. Really appreciate it, and I certainly recommend the school committee vote to accept the donation.
Great. Thank you again. Colleagues, I need a motion that the school committee vote to accept a gift of $62,000 from the Shrewsbury High School Athletic Boosters Association to support renovation of the weight room at Shrewsbury High School.
So, moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is also a time-scheduled appointment.
I'm sorry. We got the check?
Yeah.
Oh.
I was like, don't let him leave!
Moving too fast.
It's okay.
Thank you so much.
We'll take it. We know it won't bounce, too.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tony.
Very good. All right. Next item on the agenda, time-scheduled appointment is for staff recognition, and it is our SPS retirees for 2024. Colleagues, the names, positions, schools, and years of service to Shrewsbury are enclosed in our booklets, and we're honored to have many of our outstanding, long-tenured staff here tonight to honor them and wish them a happy and healthy and fun, restful retirement. So, with that, I'd like to hand it over to our Executive Director of Human Resources, Barb Malone.
Hello. Thank you. So, we have 23 staff ending their education careers, as we've been doing for many, many years now. Their total years of service are 548.5 years, and that represents an average of 23.85 years of service in Shrewsbury, and many of them also served as educators in other communities before they joined us. So, it's really an amazing accomplishment. I did want to mention that not everybody is here tonight because some people have actually moved out of the state and things like that, but I wanted to start just by acknowledging three people from the Food Services Organization. Heidi Doyle has served 40 years for the town of Shrewsbury, with 26 of those years with the Shrewsbury School Department, and she has retired as payroll and administrative assistant for food services for the district. Sandra Litchfield has served 30 years in the Food Services Department here in Shrewsbury. She has retired as a cafeteria manager from Sherwood Middle School, and Elaine Stark has served 24 years in the Food Services Department in Shrewsbury, and she is retiring as a cafeteria aide from Shrewsbury High School. So, please join me. Moving to our administrative assistants, Judith Adair served 20 years as a support staff member here in Shrewsbury. She has retired as administrative assistant from Spring Street School. She asked me to make a statement on her behalf. She was unable to attend, but she says she feels very fortunate to have worked for Shrewsbury Public Schools for 20 years, that she misses her wonderful colleagues at Spring Street, along with everyone at Central Office. She used to come in the summers and help us out in Central Office where we got to know her, and she really is a wonderful, unique person, and congratulations on her retirement. So, we have two members of the Central Office staff who also have retired this year. The first is Christine Fowler. She served 10 years for the town of Shrewsbury, with seven of those years in the Shrewsbury School Department. The other three were as the benefits coordinator for the town, and she is retiring as a payroll specialist from the Central Office team, and I know Chris is here if you'd like to come up. Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Barb.
My buddy.
Miss ya.
I miss you, too.
First, I'd like to congratulate everyone who is or has retired this year. I wish everyone many years of happiness, peace, and -- happiness, peace, and joy, and time with friends and family. In my time in Shrewsbury, like Barb said, I worked for the town for three years doing benefits, and the other seven years in payroll, and it just occurred to me on my way here that it's been my job to help people retire. So, this is kind of surreal, but yeah. I'm very grateful to have had the opportunity to work with such compassionate and exceptional people. As a behind-the-scenes person, I consider myself a successful person if the people that I support don't know me, which means that I've done my job well so that they can do their job well. I'd like to thank the Central Office leadership team and support staff, and with their tireless dedication, which was always inspirational to me. I am grateful to have worked with a team of kind, caring, and supportive individuals, especially my partner in crime, Sue Rapp, who's also retired, and our other coworkers, Kim Fitzpatrick and Dottie Flynn. Thank you for a wonderful experience.
Thank you, Chris. So, Sue Rapp was unable to be here this evening, but she has served 18 years in the school department here in Shrewsbury, six months as a para educator, and then she immediately moved into the payroll department and stayed there for 17 and a half years. And she has retired as a payroll specialist from the Central Office team. So, now I'd like to move to our paraeducators. As we all know, that's an important role within the schools and the functioning of the school day. So, I am going to first mention Kathleen Bodick, who is, I believe, here. Yep, she's here, and she's going to speak, too, so I'm excited about that. So, Kathleen Bodick has served 17 years as a para educator here in Shrewsbury, and she is retiring as an instructional assistant from Floral Street School. Come on in. Ooh, we match really well.
We do. Let's go out after.
All right.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for the invitation to honor me tonight. I retired from Floral Street School back in February. An opportunity came my way to care for my granddaughter Haley, a role that I could not pass up. It's truly amazing watching her grow and change every day. My role at Floral was an instructional assistant, a position I held for 17 years. I had the pleasure of working with three different principals over the years and many amazing teachers, as well as very dedicated paras, instructional assistants or one-on-ones. A few memorable moments that stand out for me are feeling supported and inspired during our pandemic. Our administration trained us and gave us all the tools necessary to keep teaching and communicating with all of our students. I will never forget the bonds I made with some of my students over Zoom. Another was the year I was asked to be an instructional assistant for our first year supporting kindergarteners. This position was a very challenging position, but was very important. Kindergarten is the beginning of getting kids to love school. My role became very important as the year went on because my teacher had to take a leave of absence. I then became the long-term sub. My most memorable moment with my kindergarteners was a sledding outing. Try getting 18 kids in snowsuits. A few of them had never been on a sled before, so that was really fun. We all had so much fun, and I know that they will always remember it. The role of an instructional assistant has many parts. You are the extra support in the classroom that the students and teacher needs. You are there to keep them safe at recess and in the cafeteria, but most of all, to make them feel a sense of belonging. At this time, more than any, children need the support. In closing, I want to thank the Shrewsbury Public Schools for giving me the opportunity to support and teach children. Thank you.
Now, I'd like to honor Juliana Caraway, and she wasn't able to be here tonight, but she did ask me to make a statement for her. She said, "Sorry, I couldn't make it, but I have a few things to share. I'm very thankful that I had the opportunity to work for the school department for very close to 25 years." Well, I gave her the 25. First at Floral, and then at Sherwood. Being an ABA technician has been very challenging at times, but I love children, and the rewards far outweigh the challenges. I could give many examples, but there is one that will always stand out in my mind. Many years ago, I worked with a student who was not a fan of math. He had been struggling with double-digit subtraction with regrouping for a while. Yeah, him and me both. One Monday, I was surprised when, first thing in the morning, he requested to work on subtraction. He proceeded to complete all his problems independently and 100% correctly. I'll never forget the look on his face when I praised him and informed him that all his answers were correct. Something had clicked over the weekend. He smiled, and the expression of pride and accomplishment brought me such joy. It was then that I realized that working one-on-one with children was the right It was then that I realized that working one-on-one with children was the right job for me. I'd like to thank the teachers who welcomed my students and me into their classrooms, even modifying the curriculum so the students could fit and belong. I'd also like to thank all the parents who showed me their appreciation for making a positive impact on their children's lives. Most of all, I'd like to thank my supervisor, Liz Cameyer, who we're also honoring tonight. I've never met such a hard-working, patient, kind, and compassionate person in my life. Everyone should be so lucky as to have someone like Liz. Thanks again to everyone, Juliana." And Luanne O'Brien is here this evening, but she asked not to speak, which is perfectly fine. She has served fifteen years as a paraeducator here in Shrewsbury. She is retiring as an instructional assistant from Calvin Coolidge School. So now we're moving on to our professional educators, teachers, and professional status. And the very first one is Liz Cameyer. Liz Cameyer has served thirty-six years as an educator, with fourteen of those years here in Shrewsbury. She is retiring as a special education teacher from Sherwood Middle School. This is her statement. "Dear Dr. Sawyer, members of the school committee, members of the district administration, and members of the district's special education and middle school leadership teams, thank you for the opportunity to have been a special education teacher in Shrewsbury for the past fourteen years. Teaching has brought me great joy, and I will miss it. I have loved the direct work that I have done with students, working with their families and caretakers, and collaborating with such a talented group of teachers, service providers, specialists, and consultants at Sherwood Middle School and across the district. Most importantly, I have been so fortunate and feel so honored to have worked with such a caring and talented group of para professionals." There's a little theme here between. "You have been my closest colleagues, and I am so grateful for the work that you do to support our students, each other, and me. Thank you for being by my side every day, for persevering, for celebrating our students, and for supporting me in the work that we do. I truly appreciate each and every one of you with gratitude, Liz Cameyer." Okay, Lori Descanio has served thirty years as an educator, with twenty of those years here in Shrewsbury. She is retiring as a grade-five social studies and English language arts teacher from Sherwood Middle School.
Okay. Those are hard acts to follow. But hello, everyone. I could say it's definitely a little more intimidating speaking here rather than in my fifth-grade classroom. But I always told my kids, and I still do, and they laugh, that someday I'm going to be a rock star, and I'm going to be on TV. So today's the day. So this is as far as I've gotten so far, but maybe retirement, I'll go a little further, I don't know. But on a serious note, years ago, I stepped away from a career, and I went back to school full-time and obtained my teaching degree. And it wasn't long after that that I was hired as a sixth-grade teacher at Sherwood Middle School on Sixth Orange. And I've never looked back. It was probably one of the best decisions that I have truly ever made. As I, well, in my notes, as I stand here, but as I sit here, twenty years later, it's really a bittersweet moment for me. I still enjoy working for Shrewsbury School System just as much as I did back then. I go in and I smile, and the first day of school, I'm just as nervous as the kids, and they still make me laugh and all the jokes. I have so many stories, as most teachers in here probably do. We could go on and write books for just the memories that we have. And I have so many wonderful memories and a great career, a rewarding one, for sure. And I owe a lot of that to the town of Shrewsbury for giving me this opportunity. I don't know, I've just worked with the most amazing, passionate, dedicated group of people that I could have ever imagined. So to Dr. Sawyer and the school committee, the members, the Central Office staff, Sherwood administration staff, my coworkers, my friends, lifelong friends now, and all the families that I have had the pleasure of working with from the bottom of my heart. I so appreciate all the support, participation throughout my career, and it's been a remarkable one. So, thank you.
Mary Ann Hogan has been smiling from ear to ear the last two times I've seen her. She has served thirty-two years as an educator, with thirty-one and a half of those years here in Shrewsbury. She is retiring as a grade-two teacher from Major Howard W. Beale School. And here she comes.
Here I am. Okay. I need to know where the camera is. Where's the camera?
Well, just address. It's picking you up, it's right there.
I would like to thank the school committee, Dr. Sawyer, and Barb Malone for inviting me here tonight. Anyone who knows me gets a little nervous when I'm given the opportunity to speak. I promise not to reminisce on my entire career here in Shrewsbury. Teaching today is entirely different when I began as a young teacher. What we teach and how we teach has changed a lot and will continue to change. What remains constant are the relationships and the special memories created each year. I'm not going to cry. Some of the closest friends in my life are people I have met and worked with in Shrewsbury. It's been especially rewarding that students and families that I've worked with continue to keep in touch about their lives today. What I have found most important throughout my career is to see each child for the individual learner that they are, as well as what makes them unique. The foundation in the classroom is creating a learning environment where children feel...
You can do it.
I practiced it. It was really good. The foundation in the classroom is creating a learning environment where children feel that they are heard, seen, and supported. One of our favorite things to do is to have a lunch bunch lunch in the classroom, discussing our favorite things while we eat to help make connections. As I wind down with the last few days, I look forward to enjoying my time with my rising third graders, wonderful colleagues, and supportive administrators, SEA, all of them, who have always reminded me that what we all do matters. I hope every person in the Shrewsbury Schools continues to be the shining stars that you all are. I know that the wonderful Shrewsbury educators, para professionals, staff, support staff will continue to create relationships because they truly do care about every child. I do have a special shout-out to the class of 2024, the year I had thirty students in my second-grade class. So it was heartwarming to see so many graduates from my classroom still had roots in Shrewsbury as I watched the graduation ceremony. You should be proud. And to all the parents, continue to support your children and teachers. We are all in this together. Special thanks to my parents, my family, my husband, my girls, and my son-in-law. It means the world to have had your support. I'm especially proud of the next generation of teachers, including my daughter Emily, who's in New Hampshire, Brianna Hogan, my niece at Floral, and Victoria. I just want to say thank you for everything that you have done and the rewarding career that I've had.
Thank you. Anne Marie Hurley has served thirty-two years as an educator, with twenty-five of those years here in Shrewsbury. She is retiring as a grade-two teacher from Calvin Coolidge School. Shirley Lemay has served thirty-eight point five years as an educator, with thirty-eight of those years here in Shrewsbury. No, it's just those six months. She is retiring as a family and consumer science teacher from Shrewsbury High School.
Hi. Thank you so much for having me here. This is such an honor. I have to start by saying quite a remarkable fact. In all of my thirty-eight years in Shrewsbury, I have been under the direction of a total of three superintendents and two HR directors in thirty-eight years. That speaks volumes. So when a school system is a good one, people stay. And I have a lovely photo of Dr. Sawyer. Here's the camera. Here are all three of my superintendents with me at an SEA event. So I will treasure that picture I have for many years.
That's great.
Dr. Collins, Dr. Benton, Dr. Sawyer. So I have just a little story to tell. First of all, I really want to thank all of the leadership that I have worked under for all of the endless opportunities I've had over the number of years. For me, it all started when I was hired to teach second grade at Coolidge School in the fall of nineteen eighty-six. That sounds like forever ago. It was, but then I was Shirley Markie, living at home with mom and dad. And little did I know that on my first day of school, they slipped this card into my school bag. So when I got to school on the first day, I found this. And it reads, "Best wishes to you and your new venture, dear Shirley. We want to express our love and congratulations as you embark on your new career. We have every confidence in your success and admire your determination in attaining your desired goals. We know that you will conquer the world. All our love, Mom and Dad." So reading that just before my first students walked in the door gave me this sense of confidence and relieved some anxiety that I was feeling. And so this meaningful card sat up on my desk for months, and I looked at it every day. But eventually, it found its way into a drawer and then eventually into a box. So as time went on, and I was loving my years at Coolidge, I was always so, so very appreciative of the administrators that I worked for because they allowed me to think outside the box and get creative when I was really trying to reach my students. So every year, I was allowed to take the kids down to Jordan Pond, and they were able to put the trout in the pond when the stocking trucks came. And then later in the spring, we would go back and try and fish them out. Mass fishing wildlife would come, and they taught every student how to fish. And I believe that every student should know how to fish. So I was allowed to do that every year. I was allowed to plan some weekend field trips because they didn't fit into our time otherwise in school. And then I was even allowed, believe it or not, to have some Friday night sleepovers at Coolidge. We'd go out at night and watch the stars during, that helped in our social studies unit. And then we'd get together in the cafeteria Saturday morning and make breakfast together. And no parents allowed. The only parents there were my own and my husband as our chaperones. It was quite a thing. We had a ball. And the district even allowed me to bring all kinds of school video equipment with me when I went to the mountains of Mexico to see the monarch butterfly migration, because it was the only way to truly come back and properly share what my experiences were. So they sent me off with all kinds of video equipment. It was great. So this encouragement and support that I got from the school district is I'm so grateful for because it allowed me to do this and many, many more things that we don't have time to talk about. And I mean, my husband and my kids were always so supportive and sometimes even joined me in some of my crazy extracurricular activities that I did. But it's what made teaching so fun. So fast forward twenty-five years, and an elementary health position opened up, and I thought, hmm, maybe time to use my health degree that I had been sitting on all those years. So I moved, I wanted to move into something new. So I had the task of packing up, getting rid of, giving away twenty-five years' worth of teaching materials. So my dear friend Cheryl Munjin, who I worked with, my colleague from Coolidge, said she would come in on the hottest summer day to help me box up everything and heave ho. So I started to reminisce and go through boxes. Cheryl, remember this? And we realized I'd never get through. So it was time to just throw the boxes into the dumpsters and not even open them, not look at them. So we did that. In went the box, and out, I kid you not, out pops this card, flies out and lands, flutters like a leaf, and lands on the ground. And I couldn't believe my eyes. And so, you know, as I was about to embark on a new position, out came the card. So once again, I read the verse inside from my parents, and it gave me that confidence to move on to a new position. So I went on to my new health position. I was teaching health and adaptive PE, loving it. And I especially loved finding ways to integrate my special ed students and regular ed students in my adaptive PE classes. It gave it more of a unified feel. And, but unfortunately, after six years, that position was dissolved. So thank God for this woman. Barb Malone, oh my God, I'll forever be grateful to you. She called me and let me know that the high school was, had a cooking and interior design position that I was certified for, open. And so I was moving on to the high school. And once again, I read the words that my parents had written to me so many years before, and it gave me that boost of confidence and sense of calm before I moved into my new position. And let me tell you what an awesome one it has been. It's been the seven best years of my career, really. The kids are great. High school is so fun. Teaching cooking and interior design has been a blast. It's been so rewarding. And the best part is I've been able to carry with me from my last position that I grew to love so much, a passion that I had about blending special ed students and regular ed students. So we have our unified cooking class. And it's so nice to watch the two groups of kids work together and learn from each other. So I feel like I've just been so fortunate to have so many wonderful opportunities here in Shrewsbury Public Schools. My career has been full and rewarding. And it's hard to leave something you love this much, but my time has come. It's time to move on. So last week, out of my saved special things, I pulled my card out and once again read my card because now it's time to move on. Most of my adult life has been, I've been a teacher, and now it's time to conquer the world, Mom and Dad, doing something new. So I'll forever be grateful for every day that I've had of this. So thank you to all of you, and I'll miss it.
Take a deep breath. Sarah Monica has served thirty-eight years as an educator, with thirty-four of those years here in Shrewsbury. She is retiring as a Little Colonial's preschool teacher from Shrewsbury High School.
This is different up here. I like it.
Camera's right there.
I'm going to look right here. Thank you so much to everyone for inviting us to have some time. You know, it's just crazy. It's just, I've said it often, but it is that time flies when you're having fun. I can't believe it's been thirty-eight years, and I can't believe it's been thirty-four in Shrewsbury. And, you know, when I was thinking about really my reflections on the time, the two words that kept coming up for me were partnership and privilege. It just has felt, I've just been so touched, you know, really by the families, just where we are located, of course, at the high school. And there's so many opportunities to kind of reconnect with families. And they stop by and through the years, and they have so many kind words of thanks.
and they have so many kind words of thanks and shared memories. And in the moment when they're sharing those heartfelt thank yous, I always feel and say to them, this is not a me thing. This is a total we thing. This is something that we, we do together. When you're bringing your little preschooler, your heart is actually walking outside your body at the time, I'm sure. It's, you know, for those of us who are parents, it's that out-of-body experience. And then to have that trust that they're able to, you know, allow us to welcome their child and welcome them. So, and I, I just think, you know, really the whole thing, I, I explained to them that, you know, I have a small army of dedicated high school students right alongside me with amazing colleagues, past and present. And really above all, the trust and support of families like them who lead with open hearts and mind and somehow understood the value of community, even for the youngest learners, that they would, you know, bring them up into this, this program at the high school, which is a unique model, a teaching model. So I'm excited to share a couple of stories that really, you know, speak to why I feel it's such, been such a privilege and partnership. When I was hired to come to Shrewsbury in nineteen eighty-nine to teach in the first year of Little Colonials, much of the hard work and careful planning for the program had already been done. Linda Stapleton was the director of Family and Consumer Science, and she was on a mission to bring a preschool practicum experience to SHS. She had only been in Shrewsbury for a year, and by the end of her first year, she had gained the support for her new program from the likes of the late, great superintendent, Dr. John Collins, along with the whole, the core members of the district leadership team at the time to help her develop this new program that really offered an innovative preschool programming for families. It had an entirely new mission. And Linda really knew how to assemble a team, and she led with laughter, optimism, forward-thinking, and a pragmatic mind. I learned from the best how to collaborate and lead with joy and purpose. And, you know, at the young age of twenty-six, I really hadn't thought through the time that would pass until our Little Colonials classes would arrive at SHS as high school students. And the first year that happened was the graduating class of the new, it was the new SHS in two thousand and two. And that is really when the real fun started for me. From then on, the privilege of reconnecting with students, families, and even colleagues as they pass through different phases of their lives became one of the greatest joys I have experienced in my teaching career. These shared times are numerous, and it warms my heart to think of them. But one of my favorites is the day I met Grampy back in two thousand and ten. Little Teddy Riscosi was in my class, and he was excited to tell me that Grampy brought him to school that day. I put my hand out to greet him and said excitedly, "Hi, Grampy, I'm Mrs. Monica." And as, as I looked at him, I suddenly realized who it was and said, "Dr. Collins, is that you?" It had been fourteen years since his retirement as superintendent in Shrewsbury. And he graciously said, "Hi, Sarah, it's great to see you again." We had a wonderful shared moment of appreciating that the program he had believed in and supported way back in nineteen eighty-nine was still thriving. The added bonus was that his grandson and family were now part of our Little Colonials family. And during our time together, those two years, I was, he was on the rotation every week for the, for the pickup crew. I was able to, to reintroduce him to the parents by saying, "We know him as Grampy, but in fact, his secret alter ego is the esteemed Dr. John Collins." If it weren't for his support, Little Colonials would not have existed. It was a special moment and time for me. The true meaning of Little Colonials came to me as an epiphany when I was preparing for a curriculum night many years ago. I was putting together my talking points in bullet form to share with parents. I was hoping to explain the lab practicum piece of Little Colonials to them by mentioning that their child would be interacting every forty-two minutes with a different group of five high school students every period, and that rotation would change every day, but in a way that sounded exciting, not scary. The bullet point I thought I had written was that at Little Colonials, there were a lot of moving parts. But in fact, when I looked back at my notes to practice, I had written, "At Little Colonials, there are a lot of moving hearts." It was such an apt description of what our program at Little Colonials always felt like to me. Reflecting on memorable moments always brings me back to the people who have fully engaged and supported the Little Colonials program. I want to mention Chairperson John Wensky, who has his two children at Little Colonials. And since two thousand and nine, he has created our annual class videos as well as several senior walk videos for us. They are lasting keepsakes for our LC families. This year, he attended the LC Senior Walk as a proud father of his daughter Grace, who is a member of the SHS class of two thousand and twenty-four. Sharing then-and-now photos with him the day after he delivered his speech at graduation was another example of the hallmark full-circle moments at LC that I cherish. A mantra we share at Little Colonials is, "Once you are a Little Colonial, you can finish it."
Little Colonial for life.
Right. John is certainly someone who embodies this to me. I would also like to thank Dr. Sawyer, who picked up where John Collins left off in showing me his gracious and continuous support over the years for our work at Little Colonials. He's always been there for events, large and small. Recently, he attended a recognition event with me and my family, and I felt an unwavering support, show of support from him. It will always be a core memory for me of the pride I felt as we represented Team Shrewsbury together at the state level. It warms my heart to know that he truly understands why this program is so important and what it contributes to the Shrewsbury community. I leave Shrewsbury with so much gratitude in my heart. It truly has been my pleasure and a privilege to teach and share in the lives of students and families and colleagues over the years. I feel as though many of these experiences have bonded us for life. Thank you for all the wonderful memories and the feeling of appreciation I feel for the work we've done together. Thank you.
Anne Murphy has served fifteen years as an educator here in Shrewsbury. She's retiring as a special education teacher from Oak Middle School. Christine Noly has served thirty-six years as an educator here in Shrewsbury, and she is retiring as a grade-two teacher from Major Howard W. U. School.
I'm not gonna look at the camera. And I don't have anything prepared. I've been in the speech mode lately, so I'm just gonna do this from my heart. And I'd like to thank the school committee, all of you, and Dr. Sawyer. And my principals, past and present, present would be Shelley Hoy and Kristen Gasper, our wonderful new principal, my previous principal, Chris Girardi. And I started in nineteen eighty-six teaching second grade at Patton School. So excited when I received that, that call that I got the job. I interviewed with a principal named Soren Katchadorian. And my interview basically went, "Do you wanna, want this job? Will you work hard?" And I said, "Yes, sir, I will work very hard." He says, "It's all yours." And then from there, I got to go and meet Dr. John Collins, the great Dr. John Collins. And that was a little harder. But I was hired and very grateful for that. Over the years, I've worked with so many students in thirty-six years. And I hopefully feel that I know that I've had an impact on their lives. My first class, right now, they're probably forty-three or forty-four years of age. And some of them are probably, they have children of their own in college, maybe. I keep in touch with a couple of those adult former students. Some former students were from my neighborhood who used to come by and knock on my door at Patton School. And to, I'd like to thank all, all the, and congratulate all the other professionals and paraprofessionals who are amazing, who are also retiring. We, this is a job that you have to do as a community and with people. And you need each other to do that. And we do it for the children. And you have to love children from the bottom of your heart. And to be in Shrewsbury for so many years, I've been blessed and lucky to have touched so many lives, met so many people. Colleagues, I've gone through also three superintendents, multiple principals. And it's a team effort. It does take a village. It takes a village with parents and teachers, administrators, family members. My husband is here, we know. And my kids also went through the Shrewsbury Public Schools. And I want to thank them as well for those Saturdays and Sundays working really hard for the next day in the week. I also was able to take students on field trips way back when in, on the weekends. We did a whale watch, and the parents, some of them came, some of them didn't come. And we went off to Gloucester and did a whale watch, which I think now would not happen. When I first started, we had the old mimeograph machine to make copies. And I left like covered in purple every day from school. Now there's real copy machines. We had no technology back then. God forbid, what would we do without GG and ST math? The kids did learn math somehow. And I, I do have one, I have many stories, but one in particular of a young boy that I've had a few years ago at Beal, who was a non-reader in first grade. And I have a love of reading, and that is what my master's is in, and I've loved books. And this little friend did not come to school often in first grade. And then he came to school in second grade, more so. And I made it a point every day to read with him, and we made a deal. I said, "Hey, buddy, let's shake hands. We're gonna read every day, and just for fifteen minutes, and we'll read. You can listen. You can read what you can read. I'll read, you can, we can read back and forth." And at the end of the year, he brought up Frog and Toad. And he said, "Mrs. Noly, I wanna read this whole book to you. I'm so excited." And I was like, those are those, ah, you know, aha moments or moments that you just feel it in your heart. And I said, "You know what, buddy? I have a few of those that I, I can send home with you. And I'm gonna give you a bunch of these, and you can take them home and read them, read them to mom and dad." And he says, "That's awesome." I said, "You're all set." I gave him a wink. And it is really important nowadays that kids feel a sense of belonging, that they feel that they're loved. And I've tried to do that throughout my whole career, you know. And every year, we've had, I've, I've always sent a secret handshake with my class. And at the beginning of the year, I tell them, "This is a secret, but we're the best class in the whole wide world." And then on the last day of school, they get to jump up and down and run down the halls and scream. "We're the best class in the whole wide world." And so I'm ready for that next Thursday when that craziness comes. Where was I going? Because I, I didn't write anything down.
You were gonna run screaming down the hall.
I was gonna run screaming down the hall. It's been very bittersweet the last five months or so since, you know, you let everyone know that you're gonna retire, and there's ups and downs. You're happy, you're sad, you're crying, you're, oh, my goodness, you know, what's next? And so lucky to have my colleagues. And Beal School has been amazing. And I had it. It does happen to all of us, Barb.
I'm gonna be in the next presentation, and if you stay, you'll see it happen to me.
That's okay.
No, not stay?
I just, again, I just wanna thank everyone. I, I know there's something else that I wanted to say, but it's not coming to me right now. Oh, I do wanna thank Jane Lissott along the way for kind of being there and helping. And you just have to love those kids, and that's the most important thing. And I will miss being a teacher in Shrewsbury and miss helping all of the students that I have worked with. But I am still around in Shrewsbury. We'll see if I'll sub, or maybe Chris Girardi gave me some great advice last year. Like he said, "Take some time just to relax and think about what you really wanna do before you make any drastic decisions." And I know my husband and I would like to travel. And I just need to thank everyone so much from the bottom of my heart. It's been thirty-six amazing years, and it's all I've ever done. And just thank you so much.
Mindy Sefton has served thirty years as an educator with twenty-four of those years here in Shrewsbury. She is retiring as a school psychologist from Oak Middle School. Sandra Wallach has served forty-six years as an educator with thirty-one of those years here in Shrewsbury. She is retiring as a special education teacher from Oak Middle School. And she asked me to say that she will truly miss her school, her colleagues, but most of all, her students. She'll really miss her students. So congratulations to Sandra. And Paul Wood has served seventeen years as an educator with sixteen of those years here in Shrewsbury. A second career for him. He was an engineer in his first career. He is retiring as a science and engineering teacher from Shrewsbury High School. So now we move to our administrators. Karen Gudekans has served twenty-nine years as an educator with twenty-three of those years here in Shrewsbury. She is retiring as an assistant principal from Sherwood Middle School.
I too wanna say thank you to Barb and Dr. Sawyer and the school committee for having me here tonight to recognize my years of service in Shrewsbury. I can only echo all the themes that my so very eloquent colleagues have already expressed tonight. I think the thing that has been most special for me is that I've had the opportunity to work in a variety of school environments here in Shrewsbury. I was, I started out as a fifth-grade teacher at Patton and then moved to Floral as a fifth-grade teacher, and then we became Sherwood and spent another five years teaching there as a fifth-grade teacher, and then had the opportunity to go to Oak and teach seventh and eighth grade, which was great, and then be able to come back to Sherwood as an assistant principal. And just like so many of my colleagues have mentioned tonight, over the years, I've had the opportunity to work with amazing students, parents, caregivers, and highly dedicated and committed colleagues. The work we do is indeed very challenging, but the rewards are many. And I can't think of any more worthy profession than being an educator. I am so grateful to have had the opportunity to serve as an educator in the community in which I live. That has really been an awesome opportunity. However, that does make it very bittersweet. As others have mentioned, I will miss my students and my colleagues and the families dearly. I am so truly appreciative of all the support that Shrewsbury Public Schools has given me over the years. It has been an honor and a privilege to be part of this school system, truly, truly. But most of all, I wanna thank you for putting your faith in me to work with the young people of this town.
Jean Marie Johnson has served thirty-six years as an educator, and when you see her, you won't believe it, with twenty-six of those years here in Shrewsbury. She is retiring as the director of mathematics for Shrewsbury High School.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to express my gratitude to the Shrewsbury Public Schools for allowing me to work with your students and educators for the last Public Schools for allowing me to work with your students and educators for the last 26 years. Working with so many hardworking and thankful students and families has been a privilege. When I began teaching, I was so excited for the opportunity to work with and support students with their goals. More specifically, as a math educator, my vision has always been to help the group of math people to not be an exclusive club. I wanted to help broaden the view of math beyond rules, equations, numbers, and calculations, and for more people to see math as a life skill, developing thinkers, pattern finders, model makers, and problem solvers. I've been lucky to work alongside administrators, the leadership team, the school committee, and all of my colleagues who have inspired me as a leader and who have always supported this vision. Most recently, the Colonial Fund supported the installation of additional whiteboard spaces in all of our math classrooms as we embrace the building thinking classrooms model. I'm proud of what we've accomplished with our math program at Shrewsbury High School. We've come a long way with developing a program where all students have the opportunity to see themselves as math people. While there is still work to do, I'm confident that my department colleagues will carry on this vision. I'd like to specifically thank Todd Buzidlo, who as an assistant principal and principal, has always supported our efforts in the math department. Todd is an administrator whose academic background is not math, but when he goes into math classrooms, he engages with the students and the math. He's not afraid, whether it be AP Calculus or Algebra and Geometry I. He doesn't hesitate and eagerly models for students that math is about figuring things out and that he is a math person. I'm thankful for my director colleagues and my math department colleagues. I've been lucky to work with such an amazing team of educators who are so passionate about supporting the students of Shrewsbury. Leaving Shrewsbury High School and especially the math department and high school leadership team feels a little bittersweet, like everyone else has said. It kind of feels like leaving my child off at college a few years ago. I'm looking forward to continuing to grow and new adventures, but my work here will always be a big part of me. My final thank you, of course, is to my students. What my 21-year-old version of me didn't know when I was so excited to set out on this adventure was how much all of you would influence who I am today. I'm thankful for every aha moment, yours and mine. I'm so thankful for every student who's helped me to learn, to broaden my perspective and broaden my own perspectives. I'm so thankful that I was lucky enough to choose this career and to work in this community.
So that ends the speaking portion, but I believe Mr. Wensky that you wanted to have the, make some comments.
Yes, thank you. That was outstanding. Thank you so much, colleagues. Comments, questions? Ms. Bishak?
Just want to congratulate all of you on your retirement and thank you for sharing your, your wonderful stories with us. Thank you for your dedication and your hard work throughout your careers. I'd like to thank you for the positive influence you've had on the students of Shrewsbury Public Schools and all of the lives that you've touched. And I'd also like to thank you all for shaping the next generation of Shrewsbury educators as well as mentors, as guides, as friends, and that impact that you'll have, continue to have on the next generation of educators. And just like to wish you all a very happy and healthy retirement and whatever is in your next chapter, just wish you all the best and you will all be missed.
I'm always so humbled by everybody thanking us. The thanks is really to each of you. It truly does. I think Christine Nolley said it. It does take a village and each of you are an important part of that. And we're so lucky to have educators and staff like you. I can't imagine, so we did not, we were, my kids went to Parker Road, but I can't imagine going to Little Colonials and your first experience with the Shrewsbury Public Schools is with Sarah Monica. Like how do you, like how do you go, like you set the bar so high and we continue to have staff and educators of the same quality. The common theme was like sense of belonging and that's not just the students. That's also your coworkers too, that you've touched the lives of, of them. And I'm going to pick on Marian Hogan just a little bit, just because she had one of my children. And I'm a little upset that she's retiring this year and not waiting one more year. I do have a second grader that's coming up. But you know, her impact on my student was so great and I don't think that my student realized it at the time, but it was, now she's fourth grade and it's always Mrs. Hogan, Mrs. Hogan, I saw Mrs. Hogan. But you know, also as a parent, and I don't think it hit me as much until you were talking today and I'm like trying to hold back tears, that you make an impact on the students, but also the parents. And a few weeks ago, I was checking my email and I get one of those mail previews and there was a postcard from Beal and I was like, ooh, what is this? And I saw Marian's name was on the bottom of it. So I waited for the mail to come in and it was addressed to my daughter, who that day was just having an off day. So I had her go get the mail and she came in and thus, that her day completely changed, completely changed because she got something from Mrs. Hogan. And I was kind of fearing telling her that Mrs. Hogan was retiring this year, but she came home and she was like, oh, guess what? Mrs. Hogan's retiring. So I'm glad that you told her and not me. But truly, you make such, and this is for you, but this is for all of you. You make a difference in these kids' lives, the year you have them, and the following years, and that comes home to the families. And we're so thankful for everything that you've done. So I wish all of you the best. You truly have made Shrewsbury a very special place and you have big shoes to fill, but I am sure with the amount that you've mentored your coworkers, they're going to do beautifully too. Congratulations.
Yeah, it's hard to follow, Rachel. I think I completely believe in many of you said, right, education is a public service and your service to your community has been incredible to the, to the children and the, and the families and that you don't get the thanks you deserve all day and we don't deserve thanks. We work on budgets, right? You're in there every day and doing the, doing the hard work and the challenging work. And I certainly appreciate how much education has changed for many of you over your decades in, in the, in the careers that you've, you've had. You know, I, I, I think about the way it was phrased, right, that, that what, for the preschoolers, the parents are leaving, leaving their children a little bit of their heart. I have three kids who every day come to Shrewsbury Public Schools and I trust and know that they are well and they aren't, they're going to be cared for. And I think about just the four of us here, we've got 10 kids between us, like we, we value you and your, and your work on a, on a lot of different levels. I, I know certainly I do personally. And then when I think about, you know, what, what it means both to hear your words and hear how important your careers have been and the cultures that exist and sort of what we're, we're just striving for every day to kind of keep it going and keep, keep, keep that work moving forward. But I also think that Shrewsbury is, the public schools, I'm pretty sure we're the largest employer in town. And when I look at us as an institution across all of the, all of the buildings, we're certainly, certainly one of, if not the largest. And the longevity and what it says about, this is the place you want to stay, right? And, and there are definitely downsides to a career in education, but there are lots of good upsides, right? And so I just, I really, I think about tonight as a reflection. Two weeks ago, we honored our senior scholars, some of whom talked about Little Colonials, by the way, in their comments, right? So they're talking about their careers as, as, as some of our, you know, higher performing seniors. But it's not just those, those kids. It's all the kids who we know aren't in that top 10 and needed a lot more help and needed a lot more guidance and that it's the folks like you who are really making that happen. So I'm so, so appreciative and hope you all have really wonderful next chapters, whatever, whatever they may be. Thank you.
Well, I'm feeling all 548 and a half years of service. Just amazing. Thank you all for sharing your experiences with us and thank you for just the commitment to our school district. Just outstanding, the decades of service. Our success is because of your dedication to our students, simply put, you know, and Ms. Reeferpor said she couldn't imagine what it would be like to start with Sarah Monica and Little Colonials as a parent. I, I lived it. 18 years ago, my son Jack started in Little Colonials and I was absolutely fascinated with this classroom. I mean, if, if you've been there, I think everybody in this room has, walking in there as a parent and then realizing that you can actually stand behind that tinted glass, like a fly on the wall to watch what your student is doing, that I just, I would show up early every day to pick him up just to see, you know, like, you know, what's he up to? Just very curious. And I remember having a sit-down conversation with Mrs. Monica, myself and my wife about what the next year would bring and her assessment of Jack. And we found out we had to move to Parker Road and we loved Parker Road, but we so wanted to stay with Little Colonials. But the assessment that, that Sarah made was spot on and I still see it today at age 22 with Jack. And just, you know, it's true. It's just like in a different level, you know? And then we were fortunate enough again to have Grace in Little Colonials in 2009, 2010. And I just couldn't get enough of that class because there's some, there's just some type of magic that's happening in there and in large part because of Sarah's work with those students. And yeah, I, I couldn't leave. I had to just continue doing that year-end video right up until last week's senior walk. It just was something, it was just a pleasure to contribute. I, I just really enjoyed all the work that, that Sarah did in that classroom. And I, I find myself in a situation where that's how it started and then how it ended with Shirley LeMay in Consumer Sciences, my daughter, very just loved going to her classes and was, was very influenced by pursuing a career in, in foods and culinary arts. And she's going to be going to Johnson and Wales in the fall. So thank you for, for all of your dedication to Grace and Sarah as well. And to all of the teachers here, just thank you for the decades of service. It's one of my favorite meetings of the year as school committee to honor you all for the service that you provide to our students. So can't say enough. And I will also say, and I, I think Christine Nolley said it best in terms of it taking a village. And I said that last week at the graduation, it does take a village. And I want to thank all, all your families and friends and the supports that you have behind you that led you to commit your time and effort to our school district. So thank you all for, for that. I could go on, but you know, just thank you all. I appreciate it. Dr. Sawyer for the comments.
Thank you. And there's been so many eloquent words spoken this evening by our retirees and by, by the committee members and Barb. I, I am just enormously grateful. I'm enormously proud as a superintendent of, of a district that has educators and staff who are as dedicated and, and who have done so much for the children in this community and dedicated your careers to that. Just the countless moments, small moments, small things that add up to a lot of influence that have changed collectively the, the people in this room, thousands upon thousands of children's lives for the better, and then made an impact on their families and ultimately their community, whether they stay in Shrewsbury or go elsewhere. You can feel the satisfaction of going into retirement that with your career, you've done something that's very, very important and had a very important and positive impact on others. And hopefully, as many of you said, also reflected and, and, and made your life better as well. Again, I couldn't be more proud. So thank you. And at this time, we would love to have each of you who's in attendance, our retirees, come up and shake the hand of the committee. And we have a, a small token of our appreciation as a school district for you as well. And how about from everyone here, one more round of applause for all of our retirees. Come on up. Who's going to be first?
Going? Oh, come, come right in front. Good job.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. All right. The next item on our agenda is also a time scheduled appointment. Hard to, hard to top that one. The Teacher Diversification Project was formed in 2021 and 2022 school year and each June the team reports formally to the school committee on the group's accomplishments for the academic year. The enclosed report in our booklets details the work that's been done by the Teacher Diversification Project team on each of the 2023, 2024 action items and strategic priorities. And today we have Ms. Malone and her team as we continue our meeting. So Ms. Malone, if you'd like to introduce the team and, and yours.
Yeah, a little bit later in the presentation, we'll, we'll introduce all the members of our team, but these are the ones speaking tonight. So Rob, if you want to start off introducing yourself in your role.
I'm Rob Dunn. I'm the faculty coordinator for social studies, Friday at Oak and Sherwood.
Lindsay Stachowski, the HR manager for the school district.
I'm Kristin Minio. I'm one of the adjustment counselors at Oak.
I'm Mahwin. I'm one of the assistant principals at the high school.
I'm Sartani Sullivan-Jakes. I teach Spanish at Oak.
And I'm Barb and I warmed this chair to it. So this evening, what we're going to do is let you know about our team members, describe what we are, the action steps towards our strategic plan. And our team here is going to each speak to what the teams have done. Going to go through some data and summarize where we have gone this year in terms of our action steps towards the strategic goal for this year, some of our ideas about next steps. And then of course, we're happy to take questions. The Teacher Diversification Project, which I think all the members of the school committee know, is a group of individuals who work together on ways to improve our educator diversity because all students benefit from diverse perspectives when they see themselves in their educators. This was year three of the project, which is hard for me to believe. And it started, yeah, three years ago with the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, giving us some guidance and professional development along with other districts. And then what guided our work this year really was the action goals set within the strategic plan for the district. So this is the list of all of our actual team members. So you can see here, we're just a small group of all the people who worked on the sub-teams. And we have thanks to very many people, Felicity Boisfair, Jane Collins, Mara Egan, Jordan Grinstein, Jayody Gulati, Christina Manos, did Christina make it? Not yet. She might come and cheer us on. Pam Poitras, Patty Quinn, Denise Satterfield, Adriana Sorrow, and Alekia Teniru. We're all members of our team this year. This was the first year we had paraprofessionals on our team. So you're seeing us speak, but we're speaking on behalf of a much larger group. So, you're seeing us speak, but we're speaking on behalf of a much larger group. So, just as a reminder, the Teacher Diversification Team developed action steps. And they were approved by the school committee. And so, you see them, see them here, just as a reminder. But we're going to talk more in depth in a minute. So, I'm going to turn it over actually to Nah. And Ms. Win will speak to the monthly professional development for the district leadership team.
Thank you, Barb. So, as part of the professional development subcommittee, what we did is we created some professional development for the district leadership team. And we focused our work on introducing bias, really reviewing our own biases, how we can interrupt biases, and also how that really impacts the hiring process. So, that was our focus for the year. And for us, our premise really is that biases, they're not necessarily bad. They're normal. We all have them. But we wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of it. And in order for us to do this work in our hiring process and bring it to the hiring team, we wanted to make sure that DLT was understanding that process before they started. So, we had several different activities. We started out with setting community agreements where we wanted to make sure that we created a safe and a brave space where everyone can participate. One of the activities, it's called Stay and Stray, where we introduce a lot of different types of biases just to educate each other because there are so many that were out there that people didn't know about and that resonated with people. So, I think a lot of the team members really had an opportunity to start to look within themselves in terms of their own biases. We also created equity activators. So, for a number of DLT meetings, for 15 to 20 minutes, we would have an activator where we really looked at common definitions and norms and also looking at our social identities and how do we interrupt biases. We also, one of the activators was working with the Wheel of Power and Privilege, which was put out by Angela Duckworth. And then we summed everything up with a, with practicing the new equity activator that's in the Talent for Acquisition guidelines. So, that was our year. And within all of the PD that we did with DLT, we asked for feedback. So, just in general, an example is the Stay and Stray activity. About 94% of the district leaders agreed that it was effective or extremely effective. When we did the activator on outsmarting our unconscious bias, 90%. About 90% of the district leaders agreed that it was effective or extremely effective. And when we looked at ourselves within the Wheel of Power and Privilege, about 85% of the district leaders agreed that it was effective or extremely effective. And I think a lot of the district leaders, I know some of the feedback was really not only focusing on the interview committee and interview teams, but also being able to look at it through the lens of education and their professional work as well. And I just wanted to, there were a couple of thoughts that I wanted to share with you that I thought was important in terms of some of the feedback that we got from the DLT members. One was, one of the feedback was, they were better equipped to challenge the thoughts that often arise when they were part of the interview team and being able to shift the values of different perspectives of our potential candidates rather than finding someone who will fit the Shrewsbury mold and being able to look at the more diverse needs of the school. Another comment that we had was to ensure that we're not only working to meet an important need within our district, but also to ensure that we are hiring the best candidates for our students. So, as Barb said, it's important for students to be able to see our educators within themselves too. And having that opportunity, it makes it a better experience for some of our students.
Great. Thank you. The Guide to Talent Acquisition was our next action step. That has been successfully completed. There are a number of changes to it. We have many more strong or stronger statements regarding diversity and hiring. So, a new leader coming into the organization can use this as a guide to how to go about everything from setting up a schedule to selecting your team, your selection team, and then going through the interview process, facilitating the discussions with the group. So, there's not groupthink about candidates. And also incorporating questions into their interview questions that assess the candidate's commitments to diversity, belonging, inclusion, and equity. And there is also a section about supporting diverse candidates with achieving licensure. It's a pretty hefty packet with templates, lots of questions to choose from. And of course, the new anti-bias activity that Ms. Win had discussed is in there as well. So, there's now two anti-bias activities to do with interview teams along with lots and lots of samples of how to do things, when you do them, the order. So, it really builds on the work of Dr. Sawyer's predecessor and my predecessor, where they had an original hiring guide that was very thorough at the time. And we've really taken that original document and updated it with the thinking that we have now as a district. So, then we're moving to our third action step was focused on recruitment.
So, our recruitment team, our goal this year was to really expand on what we did last year with continuing to build relationships with local area colleges and universities. We attended career fairs at Worcester Polytech, Worcester State, Simmons, and we did two at Anna Maria. We also have been posting all of our open positions in a variety of different places so that we're utilizing more than just the SchoolSpring platform. So, we are still utilizing SchoolSpring, but we've also expanded to the NASA K-12 platform, Handshake, which goes out to all of the local area colleges to their students and alumni there. I Am Diversity, the Teachers Lounge. And then we've also been utilizing indeed quite a bit the last year as well.
And having gone out in these, part of my role as a curriculum coordinator is to hire people. And I have a good product. They have Shrewsbury schools. I like to sell things that I believe in. And it was a tough sale this year, not because we don't have a good product, because the customer base has shrunk. The amount of quality teachers, qualified teachers out there has shrunk. I have, I'm optimistic about next year, actually. I saw some bumps in the numbers hiring for a couple of positions this year in SchoolSpring and saw the candidate pool go way up, at least for Social Studies. And I mean, if you can't get a Social Studies teacher, you can't get, you at least shake a tree, three fall out. And so, the, what we, but going to these, going to these colleges and things and job fairs, we got a lot of IT people, we got a lot of other people, you know, nurses and things like that. But the academic teachers that we were looking for were few and far between. So, that was a challenge this year. I do believe it will change though next year. And so, these are the connections again, the stronger we make the connections with the colleges, these, the people, it's really the people at the colleges because they give you the inside scoop. If you're just going to a general job fair, you're kind of willy-nilly and, you know, just fishing and hoping to get something. But when you have actual people at those colleges that know you're looking and know what you're looking for, it really gives you a huge advantage. And so, we've been developing these relationships as well.
Yeah. We've really fostered a lot of relationships with career services, with specific department heads at local colleges and universities. A lot of the work that the recruitment team has done goes hand-in-hand with another one of our subcommittees, with the Para-educator-to-Teacher pipeline. So, really trying to utilize different aspects and kind of think outside the box on how we can get new candidates in each year and continue to cultivate those relationships. I would say specifically, Anna Maria has been a really great resource. Worcester State, we've really made some strides with Worcester State. And then Worcester Polytech as well. We're hoping to have a one-on-one call with one of their department heads, hopefully, over the summertime. It got pushed a couple of times. Everybody's so busy. But we at least have that relationship started there as well. But like Rob said, it was really, really tough. A lot of business majors, psychology majors, which is great. We kept trying to get them in the door. And even those that weren't specifically education majors, like Rob said, we were trying to sell it and have them come in as subs and say, at least try it. You might love it.
Especially science teachers, math teachers, you know, introduce them. They may find a vocation there.
Yeah. Yep. So, it's been really great this year. And then do you want to take some of the action steps for future?
Sure. We're joining the Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity. We're participating in targeted recruitment events. And we're working with the IT project manager to revamp our website. The, it's just outreach things that we think will make a big difference. And as far as, you know, even appealing to, as Lindsay was saying, I'd like to, appealing to other people. I was an economics major. I never thought, I didn't want to be a teacher because I'd like to make money, you know? And so, I was working for the IRS and the criminal investigations, if you can believe it. And the...
No, I can't, Barb.
And so, but just the idea, I can speak personally about what a wonderful thing it is to be a teacher. And the move, I was so happy that I did. It'd be a different life, but it was, it was, I was just, you can be smart or you can be fortunate. I was really fortunate. And so, so becoming a teacher, so I can talk to, I can talk directly to those people. And we tried to turn a few. I don't know if we got it.
Yeah. Plent-ing that seed to say, hey, have you thought about being a teacher?
Teach a business class. You could teach a financial education class.
Yeah. And a few of them actually did stop and say, oh, I never thought of that. So, hopefully, we see some of that turn around there.
All right. In our fourth group working on action steps, I believe that Kristin Minio and Serenity Sullivan-Jakes will speak to that.
Right. So, this is a new topic for this year. So, it's not one of the topics that we did last year. But when Barb asked what we wanted to, what subcommittees we wanted to work on, I happily said, oh, I'll take the Para-educator-to-teacher Career Development Pipeline. And that was the only one. So, that was intimidating. But Barb was great and sent me some more people, including two Para-educators, which have been wonderful, wonderful to work with. But Serenity is joining me tonight as well to talk about some of our, some of our work. Similar to what Lindsay said, you know, we've been sort of developing a partnership with some of the universities. So, for me, in my group, we've been really focusing on Worcester State and their education department under, with Dr. Foo, Su Foo over there. And she's been talking with me about ways that we can make a connection to not only have some of our paras, you know, move on through their teaching career at Worcester State, but also to build sort of an internship connection with them. So, we're taking a look at that. We'll look at that a little bit more over the course of the next year. We also started to, once we had our para-professionals on board with us, what we decided to do was to send out a survey because a lot of our para-professionals are highly, highly educated. I think Barb said like 80% of our paras have at least a bachelor's degree. And it's fascinating to me that they're, they haven't chosen to move on at this point. And so, we started doing a little bit of digging. And we really needed to hear from the paras, like, what kinds of questions could we ask in a survey? Like, what's prevented you from moving forward? And what we found is that a lot of the paras either have a degree in something different or maybe they got their degree in another country and they're not sure how to translate the courses that they took to the licensure here in Massachusetts. So, we have one group that, one like subgroup within our subgroup that's sort of looking at that. Another group is looking at teachers or paras that are in a degree program or maybe they're getting their associate's degree. And so, where do they move forward? And then there's like another subgroup of people that are looking to move forward but aren't quite sure what to do. So, we're all taking a look at like, how do we get them to move forward in their different pathways? And sort of coming up with something that almost, I don't want to say a flow chart because it sounds too simplistic. As we started looking into it, it's actually quite complicated. So, just coming up with something so that we can start to point people in the right direction. So, some of the stuff that we've been doing this year have been sending out information from the different colleges that have been coming up. Different colleges have had webinars, like Worcester State had one. We had, I think, five or six of our Para-educators attend that particular event. So, that speaks to, you know, their Para-to-Teacher pipeline. So, we've got our groups looking at that. We're putting together a survey for the Para-professionals that we'd like to send out to get more information. What's stopping you from moving forward? How can we support your work? What do you need from us to sort of help point us in the right direction? So, we're looking at those two pieces. That's one part of our group. The other part is taking a look at our interns and our pre-practicum students that we've had this year and sending out a survey to them as well. So, how was your experience? What are some things that we could do better? What did you like about your internship? Would you like to be an educator in Shrewsbury? You know, how can we help you move forward? And so, I've included some of the comments from the survey that we were, that we had sent out. All of our practicum students that we surveyed loved it. I know Serenity had a practicum student as well that she had some comments that she'd like to share too.
Yeah. I try to pick up any pre-practicum student whenever they're offered. Most of them come through assumption because that's the language. I'm a Spanish teacher, so those students are sort of funneled our way. This year, I had a student work with me for 30 hours in the spring. I was very impressed with what she was able to do at 20 or 21 years old. And then at the end of our time together, she asked if she could return for her full student teaching experience. And I've always said yes. I mean, I'm, my classroom's open. I want to take as many new candidates as possible. I know how important it is when it comes to hiring for us to have already built connections with the, with the young graduates. So, I think we're fortunate to have also that connection from assumption.
Yeah. And we want to just keep that moving forward to continue to build the capacity of our districts and programs.
And finally, the last piece of this is we very recently learned that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is piloting an Earn and Learn program called the Registered Teacher Apprenticeship. It would give aspiring teachers who are full-time district employees help in pursuing their initial teacher license. They're looking for three to four pilot districts. This was something that came to Dr. Sawyer's attention, and I've already reached out. And we're now on the list to get more information about it. So, this may be another really great avenue where we can take some of our full-time paras and see if we're able to really develop that pipeline for them. So, the...
Ms. Malone, just as you begin this portion, and I'm just, I'm sensitive to the fact that our first part of the evening ran very long, more than expected. And there's more to come this evening for the committee. And I know we're getting into data. Looking ahead, I noticed you have some summary slides. I'm guessing if we could focus on those.
Sure.
We will post the slides, of course, online in terms of the actual, there's a lot of data slides that are here. And that way, we can try to hit the high points of kind of some of the shifts we've seen, you know, year over year. That would be great.
Yeah. I noticed the time too, Dr. Sawyer.
Yes.
So, the state provides data to us based off of, you know, what we call EBUMS reporting to the state. Two things, our students are becoming increasingly diversified and our educators are less diverse than our students. Same story we told you last year and the year before. And we have some tables here, and you also have them in your school committee book that really showed the story there. Overall percentages, so our total from calendar year 2023 to calendar year 2024 for teachers and professional educators remains roughly the same. It does take many years to move the needle on those larger numbers. But we do continue to hire diverse educators across the last three years of the Teacher Diversification Project at a higher rate than our students. Project at a higher rate than our general workforce. So again, we have some slides showing our workforce now, our workforce a year ago, and then our workforce across the last three years in terms of what we've hired. So we can see that, just very briefly, that for example, we run around ninety-six and a half percent of our staff self-identifies as white, but you can see we actually hire about ninety-one percent. So that tells you that all those other categories are increasing. For para educators, in contrast to teachers, the totals for para educators are shifting. And we are now starting to see more employees in the Hispanic or Latino, or the two or more races categories. We're actually seeing a little bit of downward shift in Asian and white categories from the overall summary at the same time last year. But again, just like with teachers, for the last three years, we're hiring para educators at a higher level of diversity than in our overall para educator staff. So we, you can see those percentages there. And then they're much higher for who we've hired in the last three years. You know, almost twenty percent Asian workers, seven point one percent black, six percent Hispanic or Latino. So you can see that there is an incredible lot of movement with para educators. Next category is daily substitutes. Similar to para educators, the totals for daily substitutes are shifting. More employees in the Hispanic or Latino category, fewer in the Asian and white category. The daily substitute hiring percentages across the last three years are the same, which is different than the other two. And that's because one hundred and twenty-four of our current, one hundred and fifty-one daily substitute hires were hired within the last three years. It's a feeder role, so you see a lot of turnover. So just to summarize our action steps, the action step of developing and implementing monthly professional development for the district leadership team, that was fully completed. The creation and implementation of the Guide to Talent Acquisition in time for hiring this, this year for next year's openings, that action step was fully completed. Our college and university recruitment, a ton of work done with this group. It was mostly completed, mostly because we got out to five career fairs and five colleges and universities, but so much work was done to improve for next year. We'll make adjustments. So that's largely completed. And then the last one, which was, started up more like mid-year, was the para educator-to-teacher career development pipeline. And the first part was completed, lots of study done by this group, it's ongoing, connections being made, conversations, getting guidance from others. And when we put out a para educator survey in the fall, then we'll be able to complete an initial outline of a plan and work with our partners to make sure that happens. So as far as future actions going, future actions go, we are having one more committee meeting prior to the end of the school year. I'm hoping to schedule that for next week, and hopefully we can get most of the team to attend. But these are all of the ideas that we have under consideration, and some of them, we've talked within the individual topics, and we're open for questions.
Great. Thank you so much, colleagues. Questions, Ms. Effron?
Thank you so much for the ongoing work, and your, your ranks keep growing, and your team is getting larger of those who are, who are joining you, which is wonderful. Recognizing the late hour, I wonder if you could just shed a little light, interesting your report, it said that Simmons College had, had decided to no longer have their special education program. And I'm just wondering, you all can only do so much. If the pipeline is shrinking for reasons outside of, outside of the, you know, what's happening here in Shrewsbury, particularly in the education of educators. So is that a trend we're seeing in other places? Are there, is the total pool, yes, we can get people to do career shifts, and that's great, but like when we think about our traditional, where we pull from, are the total number of either schools offering education programs changing? Are they seeing that fewer kids? I'm thinking about, you know, how many kids twenty years ago would have said they wanted to be educators, and now my student, my, even in my house, we're like, I'm, you know, I want to make a lot of money. And our DECA program is bursting at the seams, and everyone wants to go and be in a business. Like, so I'm just sort of wondering what you're seeing as you have those conversations with those higher ed professionals? Like what are they seeing in some of those trends?
I, I could speak to, it, it's even, even to narrow it down more, our target is diverse candidates.
Yeah.
And that pool is shrinking even more. They're, they're going other places, they're being promoted at faster rates because people are trying to diversify their populations to meet the students they have in front of them. And so, yeah, that is a challenge.
One of our HR conferences that we had gone to this year back in March as well, they had a panel that was discussing the state of the state essentially with educators. And that was one of the facts that they had mentioned, was that over the last several years, the number of students that are enrolling in education programs has drastically decreased. So it's definitely a shrinking pool.
I just pulled up something we'd seen, Pew Research said the last data they had was 2020, 2021, but over a decade nationally down twenty percent, students majoring in education.
Just from my colleagues, yeah, Dr. Sawyer, I was looking at some of the same stuff in the State Department of Labor, right? That overall jobs have grown by seventeen percent, but educators have only grown by like seven in the last decade, right? And so, yes, we have more people in the state, so there's more jobs in the state, but where are they going and what are they interested in? So you certainly have a real uphill battle. I couldn't be more supportive of where you're trying to go and the, I think the intentionality to target this from as many different angles as one can think of, and you're clearly trying to be creative and, and come up with those. So I certainly hope that while the external challenges that you, that you're facing are clearly there, and you can't fix all of those, that some of those really looking inwardly like para professionals and, and sort of saying, what can, what can we do here with folks who already know us? We're a great district, people like it, how can we, how can we help them? So I'll cross my fingers on the pilot, and that maybe we can get in that, that sounds great. But, you know, really just, I want, I want to appreciate that this, how long and hard this problem is to correct, right? And I just want to also really plainly acknowledge, my workforce is going through this problem. I don't think there's any part of our economy that has like figured this out, right? And so we're, well, it can feel maybe like one year to next year, we're not seeing, you know, the gains that we want. This is also a very, very tricky problem, and so I'm, I'm glad you have a great group of people working on it, and thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Rethan, board?
I, I too, thank you for this report. I understand that this is a difficult thing to, to work through, and there is a lot of work that was done, especially with the professional development and redoing the guide. That is huge because that feeds into the, the bigger issue. Have we talked to, just, you know, to see what Westboro and Northboro and Grafton, I'm assuming that, you know, this is similar to them too, they're going through this as well? Have in your committee work spoken to other districts and say like, hey, what are you doing? Have these things worked? Or, you know, we tried this, and then, you know, Westboro says, oh, we did that too, but we changed it. Is there a discussion with like similar districts about this?
Yeah, in particular through the Maspa Group, the Mass Association of School Personnel Administrators, has kind of an old-fashioned name, but it's a great group thriving. And Ms. Tashowski and I attend those on a regular basis, and there was a great deal of discussion on this, on this topic. So not just our close neighbors, but those further afield.
I'd also just like to thank you for this very important work that you're all doing. I know it's a lot of additional work on top of already very busy, busy day-to-day jobs. I just wanted to make a comment that I think it's great how you're trying to leverage the connections within the colleges locally. I think that's such a, a great idea with the students that are right here, that, and like having somebody in your classroom helping, you know, as an intern this year, and then maybe a student teacher next year. I think, you know, the more efforts we can make along those lines, which I'm sure, you know, just sounds like a really positive way to create a pipeline. So thank you for sharing that.
Great. Yeah, thank you for the report, and I appreciate your passion for, for this work. It's really an ongoing project, right? There's no end date, right? We just continue to work on best practices. You know, we certainly have control over best practices and kind of where we recruit, how we post jobs. We have limited control over the pipeline, right? And that's, that's the uphill battle that was referenced. I mean, we could certainly try to, try to sell them on becoming a teacher, a social studies teacher. Ultimately, it's up to the, to the applicant, right? To, to submit, and, and certainly we're trying to find the best candidate for the job. So I also appreciate how you're kind of looking from within that pool of para educators who are so talented. I mean, eighty percent of para educators have bachelors or better. So they're just, I, I like that. I like that we're trying to, you know, develop a career path from within. So, so thank you for all the work that you're doing. Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you. I'm, I'm very grateful for the work of, of the team. I want to thank Ms. Malone for her leadership, and Ms. Tashowski, you know, abling assisting her in that, in that role, and everyone who's been here this evening, but also the members who couldn't be here tonight. I, I think that I'm, I'm seeing a shift over the last few years as a result of their work, and I, I participated in that professional development, which has been very high quality. And I, I know that based on some conversations both with candidates whom we've hired, as well as conversations I know Ms. Malone has had with them, she's the one who's usually having contact in the final phase of the process when they come and meet with us to be officially appointed, that the way that they, they were connected with our teams during the hiring process, the messaging that they received around our commitment to diversity, belonging, equity, and inclusion, seeing that, you know, that's one of our core values. These are all things that, that made them interested in pursuing a position with us, and ultimately in many cases, taking one. And I know we've, you know, people we've hired for next year, we, we have definitely hired some diverse candidates. We don't have controls, and we've hired some wonderful candidates who happen to represent diversity over the last few years, who have moved on for just reasons, not because they didn't like working here, but they had a geographic relocation, or they decided to change careers, whatever it might be. But, you know, and that gets frustrating when we're trying to move the numbers. But in terms of making sure that this is a welcoming place for all, just as we strive to welcome our families and our students, regardless of where they're from or what their background is, we want to make sure we're creating that sense of welcoming atmosphere for potential employees as well. So thank you for the work you've done, and it, it is definitely making a difference. So much appreciated.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Next item on our agenda is also a time scheduled appointment. It's a report on the district goals for 2023, 2024. For background, a set of strategic goals and action steps for the school year were approved by the school committee last fall to support Shrewsbury Public Schools' strategic plan. We have the enclosure report, provides the status and associated outcomes for each of these goals. There will be two separate presentations to provide information about the progress, both at tonight's meeting and the next week's meeting as well. And here to present is Dr. LaSalle and Ms. Amy Clutter. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to be here together with my colleague, Dr. LaSalle, and especially to hear from our retiring educators, a good reminder of our shared responsibility to students and families. Ashley Santiago and Carrie Purcell from Focus Schools are not here with us, but I just want to acknowledge their support, both in starting the planning process and preparing this presentation. So I think this graphic serves as a reminder about the strategic planning process, because it's been a while since we developed and shared that initial strategic plan. As a reminder, the strategic plan is kind of like a roadmap. It keeps our destination in mind, it provides mile markers for us, and keeps us on track. And we've come a long way since September, and Jane and I are pleased and proud to share this update with you. Our vision for students informs our planning. It's kind of like the fuzzy dice, if we extend the metaphor, hanging from the, from the mirror. And we're driving together tonight. We'll each talk about one of our commitments, with more to follow on June 12th, as you acknowledged. And one thing I think is really helpful about working with Focus Schools is that their awareness in helping us recognize our tendency to finish one plan and immediately launch into thinking about the next plan, and emphasizing the importance of the pause and celebrate aspect of strategic planning. Because when we think about our year, we have an awful lot to celebrate, and especially when we have educators who are working as hard as they are, having them stop and really appreciate the impact that they're having on students and the support they're providing families is really important. And I also want to acknowledge your support in initiating the strategic planning process and finding the resources that align with some of our goals here. This is just a high-level summary of some of the things we've managed to accomplish. The through line here is really thinking about systems, and Jane and I will kind of take in turn kind of some of the work that we've done, sometimes with internal leaders and sometimes with the support of outside consultants. But from an academic excellence percy, perspective, we've really exceeded the target for reducing the number of students in need of intervention. The combination of our data meetings and our, the additional reading support personnel that we've added in terms of our specialists have really helped with that.
Additionally, our, the grants that we have received to support key programming in a variety of areas, social-emotional learning, career exploration, reading, et cetera, early literacy programs. In addition to the expansion of our RISE program, Meg Belcito shared at our, at your last meeting regarding the accomplishments there and the celebrations. We have, are very grateful to our community partners who have positively contributed to expanding our career exploration and internship programs. It does take a village, and it takes many members of our community to make that, those accomplishments come to fruition. So we're grateful to the community, to our educators, and to our students for their courage and commitment.
And one of the things that was really helpful about working together on the strategic planning process with the district leadership team is that all of our school improvement plans are aligned with this. So you'll hear a little bit about district-level action steps, but the school and building-level action steps are kind of nested within the larger strategic plan. And I think that focus about what we're going to say yes to, and just as importantly, what we're not going to focus on, has really fueled some of the progresses we've made. So as you remember, we have three commitments, educational excellence, the enhanced well-being of all, and the optimization of resources. And you'll hear about just the first two this evening. And again, our, our focus is to talk about the plan we developed for this year, and most importantly, the impact that our work has had on students, families, and staff. So in terms of thinking about commitment to educational excellence, we've been really thinking about how to promote high-quality instruction, developing systems for kind of acknowledging what that looks like, and professional development that aligns with helping educators improve their practice, collecting data about students and tracking their progress, and then providing aligned supports based on what their needs are. The practices that teacher, teacher teams and district leaders have put in place have worked, and we saw a significant decrease in the number of students requiring intervention. In fact, we exceeded our goal of reducing by ten percent the number of students that required reading support by a wide margin across the elementary grades in particular. We also saw improvement in the number of students reaching grade-level benchmarks, and we're hopeful that the addition of a reading specialist position at Oak next year will fuel more progress there. Finally, we made significant strides at Shrewsbury High School in terms of providing more students more opportunities for advanced coursework and career tech exploration opportunities.
Moving on to our commitment to the enhanced well-being of all, we have many accomplishments here, and we're continuing to strive to strengthen our practices, and we rely on one another for that help. The first star here is directly related to the goal of continuing to provide access to targeted professional development focused on inclusive and culturally proficient practices, diversity, belonging, equity, and inclusion, universal design for learning, and department-specific training that occurred this past year. We, as you know, successfully integrated over fifty students, one as recent, recently as today at Beal School in grades actually pre-K through high school. Our most recent panorama spring 2024 data indicates that students who responded favorably to the category of belonging increased by three percent at Oak Middle School and two percent at Shrewsbury High School, which we see as very positive. Again, our RISE program saving our school district more than $300,000 in out-of-district placement costs as our students remain here with us. Our, both the SEL leadership team and the staff well-being leadership teams, these are district-level teams, in addition to school-based teams focusing on social-emotional behavioral academic learning, in addition to as stress management for students and staff, we're making gains there as we look to integrate those practices across the school day. making gains there as we look to integrate those practices across the school day by providing supportive learning environments, positive interactions between adults and students and adults and to adult, and explicit SEL instruction, as well as integration of SEL and academics. And as we mentioned just a couple of minutes ago, the, the grant funding that we have received and specifically as that relates to social, emotional, behavioral learning has been greatly appreciated and we will use it wisely. And finally, utilizing the data that we receive from mental health screeners that helps us inform our practices, particularly for those students who are identified as tier two and tier three students needing counseling and other more intensive interventions.
So we have a lot to celebrate thanks to the hard work of the educators in our system and the district leadership team. And we will continue to reflect on kind of what the next steps, as you've heard from Barb and her team, as part of this plan, everyone is thinking about their role and thinking about what's the next iteration of, of this work as we head into the next year of the strategic plan. And we're here to answer your questions.
Great, colleagues, questions? Ms. Boucher?
Just wanted to thank you for the excellent report. There's certainly a lot to be proud of, the accomplishments that have been made in a very short period of time on multiple fronts. It just goes to the hard work of everyone in the district. And I just wanted to, I love the slide presentation, but I also love the format of the progress report that you provided us in our school committee books. It's just so helpful. It's the same format that we've used for the strategic plan. We can see the completed actions, we can see the outcomes, it's all right there in one document. I'd encourage people in the community to, to take a look at it. It's, it's very well done and it's very, very user-friendly format. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the reminder. I meant to say that upfront, we're doing high level because we have a detailed report. Glad people will take the time to read it.
Thanks. Ms. Heffernan?
Yeah, I really appreciate the need to pause and reflect and notice all of the good work because, you know, when I think about even the educators who are here on the earlier part of the meeting, right, it's a, it's a, it's a hard job, it's a busy job and maybe not, not always easy to pick up and see the long, the long view. And so taking a moment to do that, I, I, I hope there'll be opportunities, Dr. Swire, for you to share this back with, with the, with the staff, right, to say, look at all, look at all that we did in and amongst, right? At times a challenging year for, certainly for, for some, so. And I, I even am recognizing that it's not exactly in the, in the plan we're going to review outcomes, but I'm thinking about the things that aren't even in here, right? Like we also changed start times, so like everyone's day changed, right? Like times changed, we have to like manage that and the families. And so there's like so much more that goes above and beyond, but you've really captured the essence of a lot of really important work. And I, I also appreciate, as Ms. Boucher said, sort of having a format that's consistent that we can pay attention to and like year over year, we can go back and say, okay, how are we doing and are we making progress? And some of these, some of the particular progress notes that you have are, are really quite impressive and, and deserve, people should feel good. They should take a moment to feel good, even as we're always in a process of, hey, now what's next year, right? But, but the state benchmarks and the, the kids needing, you know, those, those kids qualifying or needing those extra interventions, some really meaningful numbers. And so it's, it's quite impressive and I hope, I hope our staff feel like, you know, I know at times we're probably seen as asking a lot of them and then like, but these are the outcomes and this is, this is, this is why that extra, extra thing, you know, is turning out to have some really wonderful outcomes for kids. So, so, so thank you for the report.
Ms. Boucher?
Similarly is, thank you for the report. There's a lot of really, my allergies are coming through, so I'm going to lose my voice at some point, which is probably okay, but there are so many really good things that happened this year, especially in a year that was challenging and there were a lot of things that came up that you kind of had to pivot and maybe you weren't able to spend as much time on something, but you still got it done. But similarly with to what you said, there are a lot of things that aren't on this report that happened naturally that we should be very proud of. And it's something that, you know, we don't capture and, and, you know, somebody's not going through this and saying like, these are extra things that we did, but those are huge things that we should be very proud of. So I appreciate this and there's a lot of, even the things that maybe didn't get done fully is a really good starting point for what we're going to do next year. And you can kind of pivot and say, okay, well, we did this amount of work, but through the course of the year, different things happened, we kind of pivot. So thank you for this, this is great. This is something that the school district should be very proud of for the work that was done at the leadership level, at the, the teaching and staff level.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you for the report. This is a lot of significant progress flashed on the screen in a short amount of time. You should all, you should all be proud of it. I mean, it's, and I think about it in terms of just keeping the train on the tracks, the day-to-day work that you do every day. And then we're accomplishing all of these exceptional things, just a few things that come to mind. Obviously Maple in Maine is a huge, you know, win for the town, not only just the school district. Securing all these competitive grants, I mean, we've, we've talked about it many times, how important that is and, and it's not always a guarantee, right? So there's some significant work there, the reduction in students qualifying for intervention, exceeding that goal, which is great. The pre-K to for capital planning, you know, work that was done. And then the career and technical education work that you've done, Dr. LaSalle, just outstanding work. We've, we've opened up more doors from a career perspective for many students in the high school and even earlier with a lot of the career fair. So a lot to be proud of there and there's just so much to cover, you know, but encourage the public to, to review the report and to look at the data, the success that we've had this year, as well as all the great programs that we've, we've worked on this year. So thank you so much, Dr. Swire.
Thank you, and I'll, I'll be sure to send a link to the report into the slide deck out to, in the next update that goes out from my office. Echo the, the comments made, I, I had a meeting with the district leadership team today, which is all of our district leaders from central office to principals, assistant principals, curriculum leaders, directors. And we, and we did try to emphasize, there's a lot of excellent work that's been done this year. And, and, you know, from our support staff to our para professionals, to our professional educators, and certainly, as I noted, the leadership team in terms of orchestrating a lot of this during a year where there were a lot of challenges in a variety of ways and it's a challenging environment in, in the, the public education sector right now across the nation and the state. And locally, we face a lot of the same challenges, but we were able to, to do some things that were concrete and really made a difference for kids, made things more effective. And I, I can't help but connect the quality of the educators that we have and staff that we saw earlier, just some of our retirees, you know, multiply that times and we have about, I think we probably are the largest employer in Shrewsbury, we have about 1,000 employees overall, who do excellent work every day and, and, you know, with the support of families, with the support of the overall community, having another stable budget year so we could focus on doing this work instead of trying to figure out how we're going to make reductions. There's a lot of things that came together to, to help make this real. And, you know, we have, we have great kids overall and, and that's something that we, it's a, it's again, just a, I'm very proud as superintendent and we look forward to sharing this good news with the community. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda is under new business. It's an update from the Appsebit Valley Collaborative. State law governing educational collaboratives requires four updates each year to member school districts. This update refers to the Appsebit Valley Collaborative's FY23 Annual Report, which is enclosed in our booklets. And Dr. Swire is here to provide the committee with an update.
Again, this is a requirement of the state, as you mentioned, that we provide routine updates four times across the year to the committee. I did include in your packet the annual report of the collaborative, which provides a lot of good information about the programs there and how they help member districts like Shrewsbury be more efficient and effective in spending their dollars for programs that we send our kids to there. And both educational programs as well as providing our out of district transportation, some joint purchasing, a lot of benefits from being part of the collaborative as, serving as the board member representing Shrewsbury. I've been pleased with the continued work and I think, much like our district, the collaborative as an organization is now really getting its legs under it after coming through the pandemic and, you know, I'm pleased with the, what I'm seeing and reports I'm getting as a board member. And again, there's a lot of benefits being part of it and will continue to be an active member of the group. And if there are any questions the committee has, I'd be happy to answer them.
Great, thanks for the update. Any questions or comments? Great, well, thank you so much for the report. All right, let's see. The next item on our agenda is approval of minutes. The minutes from the school committee meeting held on May 15, 2024 was provided under separate cover. Any provisions or amendments? There being none, they'll be accepted as written. We do need to enter into executive session tonight, therefore I need a request, I need to request a motion that the school committee enter into executive session for the purposes of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Sections 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, purpose seven, open meeting law in Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Sections 22F and G, for the purpose of reviewing, approving and/or releasing executive session minutes, and B, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting law may have a detrimental effect of the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and chair so declares. Purpose three, the Shrewsbury Education Association, Units A and/or B, the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association and the Cafeteria Workers Association, and C, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20A, 21A2, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, non-union clerical and support staff and/or administrators, including district administrators, principals and the superintendent of schools. Purpose two, where deliberation in any open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and return to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening. May I have a motion?
So moved. Seconded.
Moved and seconded, roll call vote is required. Ms. Boucher?
Aye.
Ms. Boucher?
Aye.
Ms. Heffernan?
Aye.
Myself, aye, thank you and good night.